Not for me. Not for me. My wife's an retired lawyer, ten years now. He loves them.
Well, I'm not saying it financially.
My mother started her second career in seventy-seven. She went back to work. She got bored. Worked a fourteen years. Worked until ninety-one. Finally, they all got to work.
Did she go to work? Didn't go to work yet?
Yeah, she was so bored at home. This is second career. It was working. Half days. Two in the bullet. But she was an excellent.
Right, but I wasn't there. I apologize.
So it's seventy-seven. Waterloo. And it was a lot easier for pipeline.
Okay, done. Thank you, Bernie.
Oh, just a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get it.
Let's tell them. We're getting charged. Hold on. You might have everyone.
I know everybody knows this, but no sunshine, just four days, it's starting to get. The bad, isn't it?
No water, no forest fires.
Right, right, that's true. Positive thinking, right? Yeah. Good morning, Judy. Good morning, Rick.
Hi, Rick. Is it morning?
Yeah.
He can hear us, so I believe.
He was just calling me.
I was gonna check the volume.
No, I have the volume.
Usually we have to turn up the volume.
Can you hear us? Can you hear Rick? Okay. You must have it on mute then.
No, it's the mute, the volume needs to be up.
Can you hear us now?
He can hear we, you can't hear him.
I can hear you, no problem.
There you go.
Okay. You good?
No, I'm not. Did you hear my name? Okay, I barely hear this, sir.
Yeah, no. That's great.
Good morning, everybody. Can we please answer the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm assuming it was a good weekend, Rick?
A bad, had a good time.
All right, good, good.
I want to come back tomorrow. Wine back out if we see you guys Thursday.
All right, sounds like a plan. This sounds good. Somewhere, I have an agenda.
Can we approve the minutes of the August twenty-nine meeting? The published agenda has public comment lower on the list.
Okay.
She said she put that on the list.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, so we don't need to do that.
All right, sorry.
No, you're good.
So what you're saying is you moved the public comment in front, right? Is that what you just discussed? Okay, so I'd like to have a comment before you approve anything, please.
Sure, for the prison board.
For the prison board, yes, sir.
Okay, sure, sure.
So the, I appreciate that I got this this morning, but I was told the week prior, plus I already know this, but I'm trying to allow this to come from my functionaries. My functionaries told me to come twenty-four hours in advance for any pertinent information I wanted. The reason you do that, and I know you do it, but I'm giving you guys a chance to learn it, is we have got to have a chance to read things. I'm getting this now, right? So twenty-four hours in advance isn't even enough time, but I'll deal with that with legislators. I need to have, and the public needs to have all the pertinent information available on the website, twenty-four hours in advance. I came here to the office for it. It somehow needed to be approved in order for me to get it, and I didn't get it till this morning. And even one of our commissioners even said, "I'm not allowed to have it till this morning." That's a Reading versus Eagle case that says not having pertinent information in advance. It's like coming in here and putting a bag over my head. You let me in here, put a bag over my head so I can't see what's going on until just this morning. So please have all pertinent information available on the website for the public twenty-four hours in advance at minimum. That's not enough time, but at minimum, please give that to us. Thank you. And I, Tom, I think you discussed that you would do that, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. What I did before, but what I did before I left, I had, I was in the hospital yesterday, and I had different tests, and that's no excuse. But I had everything done Friday. I asked you to dismiss it on Friday, and maybe there was misunderstanding.
Okay, thank you.
We recorded something that might have happened.
Oh, yeah. I didn't, I didn't realize.
So is there anything that's gonna be voted on on this? Is this gonna be approved into the minutes?
The only thing I have is a suggestion here. But there was nothing to be voted on.
So this, so here, there's, if there's any type of official action, this is official action. This isn't just voting. It's deliberating, commenting, discussing. If that gets generated on this paper, which it will get generated, because I'm generating it right now, this has to be available to us by your law that binds you twenty-four hours in advance. Then you need, then you need to talk to your functionary to be sure it's here in advance, because it's a violation. I don't, I don't argue. I only state the facts. Twenty-four hours in advance, so we can speak educatively on this item. There's gonna be deliberation on this. It's happening right now. This is called deliberation. There's four definitions of deliberation, not just voting. So please have this to them at minimum, twenty-four hours in advance. Okay, you're being ordered to do so by the public. The public is, and guess what? All authority, all authority derives from the people. And then we gave them, we gave them, we gave them the, okay, I'm in the middle of an objection right now. There's no time limit on objections. This, this clear, no, this is an objection. There's no time limit on objections. So now my functionaries are clearly misunderstanding the law. Yes, you are. Twenty-four hours in advance. Anything that's gonna be deliberated on has to be in our possession.
We understand that.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the want and neglect on your part. The want and neglect on your part not to follow an order is being recorded. There's no explanation, but you're welcome to try. It'll be, it'll be arguing. It'll be arguing. I don't want to argue. Twenty-four hours in advance where to have this stuff.
I know.
What's the law? Tell me what the law is.
George, it represents it. He presented your report to the board.
I report to the board.
He comes to the board today at a public meeting.
And, okay, so now I'm getting ready.
The public comment, I'm not even sure the public comment is required at a prison board meeting. Historically, they've done it.
Listen, historically, it's nothing. A meeting is a quorum, okay? And there is a quorum of that board here, and they're using public funds. This is an open public meeting. Paul, you really need to get help on this. You need to get help on this so this gets done right. Just because you've been doing it wrong for twelve years doesn't mean we're gonna continue. These men, who I respect, and they don't respect me. I respect them long before they became commissioners. They will not be in this office ten years from now. And then if we don't get this right, the next layer, and if you don't help get this right, and I hear you talking about retirement, if you don't help get this right, the next round of people that come in here are gonna do the same wrong thing. And my kids will come home to roost in this county. And this is not good, what's happening. Just because other people don't see it. I'm sorry, I see it. Please continue.
That's a prison board report. Okay, this is from the last. We had twenty-nine new commitments and forty-one committed. Our current count is we have forty males and sixteen females. We have two males boarded out and five females boarded up. That brings a total that's through sixty-two, and we have we're boarding two for other counties. So there's fifty-one washed. We're not paying the housewives up there. Two of theirs down here in two orders.
Thank you.
Yeah, that is. This is Matt. We've been in contact with answers out there in Benray or whatever. What they're doing.
Right, right. Yeah, have we heard anything different?
I have not.
All right, so he called me on Friday, and I told him, again, I said how important this was and that we needed to have some there this week, because if another one goes down, we'll be without. That'll be very costly. And he assured me that they were gonna have they were gonna come up with an answer. I don't know what the problem was in the past, but I talked to the owner of it. He was pretty good about telling me that it would be done. Everybody at least have a plan this week. Do I have a motion to accept the warden's report?
That was official action, gentlemen.
You have a motion made. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Second. Commentator? Aye. Any opposed?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
The nurses, Dr. Dennis, whatever, in that area, how often does the nurse visit?
Every day. Twelve-hour shift, every day.
And that's contracted out, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And I didn't need to answer for you, but I knew that. Okay. Any old business from?
Tom, you have to refer to the agenda.
Oh. Thank you very much. Can I approve the agenda from our last meeting minutes? I'm sorry. I don't do this that often anymore. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for August twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
Some more. Thank you. A second? I'll do that. Everybody approve? Anybody?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. No names? Full business with the prison. Any new business that we need to discuss?
It's the warden's report. The numbers are telling forty, forty-one out in twenty-nine.
Right, that's much better.
Getting a handle on it. And I said we still have some to leave for state. We give that.
With the state, I knew that, yeah. But still, I think if I'm, yeah, that's, we still have less out than, you know. Well, that is, that's better, yes. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
She's almost over here.
Second. On favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate all you do. I'll see you soon. I'll go over that stuff that you gave me. Okay. Hey, what? Okay. You guys all okay recording? You're all okay with that?
Yes.
All right, cool. Yeah, no problem.
Okay, no trouble.
Okay, I'd like to call the Wyoming County Commissioners Meeting to order.
It's gonna be sending up.
Public comments for action items. Take four votes.
I look up the votes if you want me to.
Sure.
But they don't have anything to do with what's on the agenda. So why would you like?
Yeah, towards the end of the course.
All right.
All right. Or, I didn't know where it was.
Yeah, I didn't put the page over, sorry.
You got it. Public comment on another. I didn't know where it was.
Yeah, I didn't put the page over, sorry.
You got it. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I like that much.
Second? Would you make? Thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
At this time, can I get an approval of the minutes of the September twelfth, twenty-twenty-three meeting?
I like that one.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Clerk Amber Frinkle.
I just wanted to let everybody know, since we're having issues with YHOPE PA.org, that we do have a new website. It's wyoming20ca.gov, and it does reconnect or redirect now if you go to YHOPE.org.
Oh, thank God.
Thank God.
You know, right? I like. I haven't had emails since last Thursday.
Yeah. We're having issues, but it does redirect if you go to YHOPE.org.
Wyoming County PA.org. Yeah. It's more secure. In the long run, it's gonna work out much better, but.
I have, I have to ask her a question that, since, I didn't know she was gonna talk about that, so I wouldn't have known to comment on that. Now, if I went on my website today, it still says the twenty-first meeting happened. So why is some of that stuff? If I opened my phone up right now, it's still, is, what's happening there? Do you know? Is there any time that I can, I can make with anybody sitting in front of a computer and so they can see what we're experiencing from the outside? Because.
You mean, George, the meeting minutes?
No, like the meetings, though, like, like that twenty-first meeting the other day.
Oh, I see, it didn't have today.
Yeah, no, they did. I seen that on somebody else's computer, you know? So I'm confident that on one computer it shows up, another one.
Not on all of them.
Is there any, does someone, does an IT guy need to tighten up and connect more dots?
We have a company that does our computer for us. I'd be glad to reach out to them.
Because I.
Because if it's not working on some and some on the other, I have no idea.
Right, it might have to connect more dots. You know, maybe, maybe it's the PCs that are doing it, and the phones aren't, or other devices aren't.
There's a company called Mudis that does our computers for us.
Okay.
So I'll give them a holler.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Mudis Media? They local? Yeah.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Solicitor attorney Paul Lou in report. I have the Commissioner's activities report there with me here. Commissioner's report of activities since last meeting. We attended the Penn State Extension meeting. We had an opioid settlement meeting, meeting about the drop-in center that's here in Wyoming, Tony. Our northern tier.
No, they have an open house tomorrow. Three to six.
Thank you, Bernie.
The first, the first open house.
That's four.
And where's that at?
Right across the street.
At the.
At the, at the United Methodist Education Building.
In the basement.
There's the corner. Corner of Warren and Marion, the distance is three Marion.
There's three that we're gonna have. That's their first. And then. And that's their first. If you give me a holler, I'll tell you what you're.
Being run by the youth director. Like when all of United Methodist.
The Northern Tier Loan Committee met. We had a senior expo, which, by the way, was amazing. There was hundreds of people there. The building's not, anywhere is big enough. That was Tina's ticket that had the senior expo at the Trenton. We went to the open house at the White House on Warren Street. It's the new bed and breakfast in town. We had a recycling event, which was also very successful. The touch-a-truck at Lazybrook. The Eatonville Baptist Church had their two-hundredth anniversary on Sunday the seventeenth. NACO Finance and Pensions. Geisinger had a clinic reception at the new building. R S B was required. I spoke at the State Capitol for Recovery Addiction Day. If I can just do a little highlight of that. We were able to tell what we're doing in Luzern, Wyoming County over the last several years, since I've been here anyway, with our new LEDI programs, all the different M H programs that we have in Wyoming County now. And it was a huge honor to represent Wyoming County, both Luzern and Wyoming County, and the County Commissioners Association were all there. So it was, it was a cool day, and I'm really honored to be able to do that. We have a, we had a township convention with all the township supervisors at Trenton. Full coalition meeting we had. And we get meeting. And I pay at the fair. Bernie got to attend that. Williams Barbecue had a competition with all the different companies to raise money for United Way. They've done this for the last several years. We had our favorite meeting, our solid waste advisory meeting. We met with people to bid on the egg building, trees, and brush removal. Meeting with D C E D about new programs at the Chambers Office. We met with Division Committee at the Tree Hub Center. Met with bidders again at the Egg Building. Republican Dinner at Trenton last Saturday. And we had a state, yesterday, you had a safety committee meeting in the courthouse. So that's our our reported activities since the last meeting. I have here correspondence, but but I don't, do I need that, Dan? You guys just left there.
All right, is there any correspondence?
I mean, the V three quarter, okay. All right.
So if we could, we see the correspondence.
All right. So actions taken at the last meeting. This is just to wrap up with what we did last time. We discussed and approved hiring of Sierra Natus Deli Community. We discussed and approved bids for nine eleven, nine-one-one items on UNICEF that ended yesterday. By the way, we sold a, an old Army truck that we've had here forever for eighty-one hundred dollars. That was a grocery shop. We formally voted for disaster declaration from eight eighteen flooding disaster that affected Forks and Washington and Lemon Townships that was signed on nine five of twenty-three. We discussed and declared emergency flash flooding event affected, that affected numerous county townships and boroughs on nine nine of twenty-three. And we discussed and voted sugar in your contract. Action items to be voted on today, to be acted on today. Can I do that one? Thank you. We need to approve, or I'm asking, if we can approve juvenile justice rates, which will serve October first through the seventh. We don't have another meeting before then, so I. I'll just read partial, partial of the proclamation here. It's written by the governor. Whereas Pennsylvania's juvenile justice system is charged with providing programs of supervision care and legal aid. For the purpose to call on Pennsylvania government, agencies, public and private institutions, and schools to remain committed to raising awareness and understanding of juvenile justice. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
I'll make that one.
Do I have a second?
Second. I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Bernie, Rick. The next I have here is approval to hire Kevin Douglas Chatura, and I am so sorry if I'm saying that wrong. Chakura Chatura as juvenile probation officer. The start date would be October second, twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve to hire Kevin? Motion's been made? Motion's been seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, I have an addendum to the health service agreement. Again, I have everything here for that. The, what happened is we have a new service area. I checked on this last time just to make sure that this was the total for everything. Part of this, it looked like they were raising our prices. But the difference in the services or the difference in the price was our mental health services, our M A T at the jail, which is provided to us from our M A T from Susquehanna, or I'm sorry, Luzern, Wyoming County S D A. That's a, a part of the the bill that's being reimbursed to us monthly. And also, there's a per diem here for mental health and services that cost about eight thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars a month. And that's being reimbursed to us by Mental Health Services of Luzern, Wyoming County. So the actual difference in price for this addendum is about four hundred dollars a year after you take those two out of there. But it was deceiving the way it was sent to us, and I wanted to make sure that was all correct. I met with Celine in the prison. Bernie and I went over it, and it's it's only about four hundred dollars difference. So that's a normal difference per contract over last year to this year. I hope I explained that clearly. So the, the monthly rate is thirty-eight thousand one ninety-six fifty-six with the eighteen thousand taken out of there. So our plan cost is about twenty thousand dollars a month, which it was last year. It was nineteen thousand four, four hundred forty-eight. So what I'm looking for is an addendum to the health service agreement. They have, there's a signature on here. One has just my signature, and one has all three signatures. So I need a, a motion to accept the health care agreement.
I'll make that one.
Motion's been made? You don't have this in front of you, Rick? So I'll make the second.
Right, I'm gonna, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm, I'm going to abstain just until I read it.
Sure, sure. Absolutely, and I don't blame you. I didn't know how to get it to you ahead of time, and I didn't want to bother you at a wedding.
I believe everything you're saying, but I want to, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, so the motion's.
And I'm not against it, I believe.
No, I know you do, I'm okay. I, I, we're fine. We're fine with that. So Bernie made the motion, I'll second it, and I'll let Rick take a look at it when it's done. So in favor? Aye? Okay, and what I'm saying. All right, so I have on here to open bids, bids for the ag property. Is that?
We have bids here.
All right. You want me to wait till after? So nobody has to wait if they go after?
Well, the bid opening, you know, basically, we, that's all we're gonna do today is announce that they're open, because we have to go over them, make sure that everybody understands what's involved with each.
So there's two bids. There's one bid. Or I'm sorry.
Three bids. Yeah.
Open bids for the ag property, two projects at the egg building?
Right.
All right, and one for gas, a couple of the four hours. You want to open those, Bernie? Shall we do that? They had until ten o'clock this morning?
Right.
Okay. So we're not.
Okay, this is from a certified arborist. Oh, I said that right.
Arborists?
Yeah, from Berwick. And these, these bids are for removal of the landscaping that's currently And these, these bids are for removal of the landscaping that's currently with the overgrown of the ag building.
That's a, that's an understatement.
Cherry Hill Group.
Ernie, what's the amount of the bid?
Oh, yep.
Eight hundred dollars.
Certified arbitrist?
Yeah.
Okay, the next one?
Cherry Hill Group is, um, I want to make sure of those things. Fifty seven fifty.
Isn't that local, right, Ernie?
Is that?
There, there are local companies, Cherry Hill.
Yeah. They do a lot, quite a few things for it. Georgia Land Service from Little Meadows. Twenty two thousand.
You guys are keeping track of this, right?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
This is, these are all for the same, same project?
Yeah.
Eight hundred and twenty two thousand, that, that's a differential? Did you, did you mean to say eight thousand maybe? Is it eight hundred?
Yeah, eight hundred.
Two tri, two triacs, a load of dirt is eight hundred dollars popping. Something's wrong there.
Yeah.
All that has to be done. That's, that's the next thing we have to go back over the site.
I have it sometimes.
Everybody understands exactly what has to be done here. Tim Morris. And he's local too, he's from the shopping. Four thousand five hundred dollars.
And this is that for one job?
What's that?
This is all at the ag building?
This is all project one.
There's a lot of, but I don't know.
I, I, I don't know that, I don't know that this first guy met with us when we were supposed to be here, so we have to.
Is this still project one?
Okay.
Is this still project one?
No, this is project two now. That is removal of the trees surrounding the ag building. And we had designated which trees down there. This is from Preston Roberts. Robins, R O B E B S, Fall, Pennsylvania. Thirteen thousand two hundred dollars.
Is that the, it was only the one for the trees, Ernie?
No, no, I, that, that one's better. This is from Beaver Logging, which is also mechanic from. Thirteen thousand dollars on project two. This is from Brown's Tree Service. Tree removals fifteen thousand eight hundred sixty nine dollars. And this is from the certified arbitrers. I don't think I'm saying that right.
I'm sorry.
A R V O R I S T.
Arbrist?
Berwick.
Yep.
Eleven thousand two hundred dollars.
And then the last one would be for, so that's it for number two?
Right.
Last one would be for our gas hookup for the courthouse. It's natural gas.
We only have one bid on this at this time.
I don't know if there's a lot of people besides U P I that do that.
I was expecting.
More.
But I, but now these people, of course, have to be certified by U P I.
Right.
So that's, you know.
So, so they called me to ask me who they needed to talk to and I told them U P I.
And this is from R Y D N I C A Mechanical. He has a clinic spell office in Nicholson, you know, State Route two zero three five Nicholson, probably, you know, I don't know.
Wyoming County.
Yeah, but rural areas, you know, towards Lemon, I mean, out that way. Anyhow, uh, twenty five thousand eight hundred twenty three dollars. That was the only, only bid we had, I'll not pick for one.
Okay, so we are holding those bids and are gonna take action on them at another time. We're just gonna open the bids today, so it'll be advertised before we take action. And we may have to put that gas hookup bid out again, I don't know. Um, because that's, that seems like a lot, but I don't think.
Yeah, I don't like the idea of only one bid.
No, I don't either. So we're, again, we'll advertise that and before we, we do any action at all.
Yes.
Yeah. Either way.
We had someone else that was certified, but was not certified yet. If we be honest, we may want to wait. If anybody wants to be certified.
I remember when we were talking about gas, it was gonna be like twenty five hundred bucks and we'll go. Yeah, that's not a, that's not, that's end time. But I don't know, I don't know what all is involved, so, um, that's why I don't. All right, so I have on a, a public comment next, but before the meeting started, I was handed two things. I, I don't know if I'm allowed to act on them or not. One is a, it's not for public asset access. It, it contains files that are through registered, um, adoption. Um, there was a problem, we already okayed the public adoption. But they, they needed more access to the person's files. And in order to do that, the commissioners had to sign off on that. Again, it's not for public access, this file contains protected health information for a child.
Who's, who's requesting it?
Um, our, our, C N Y, our human services director.
So you have to make a motion to amend it.
Right.
Now that it doesn't item.
But before I do that, um, the tree hub also contacted Linda this morning about a resolution for the board of commissioners. And it's for, and we may have to table this, but, um, it is for, there was, here, the Nicholson Water Project. Um, and the housing rehab. It's a modified budget, it's less, not more. And the other one is a resolution for, again, these were just, this just came in this morning, a moving water line that was deleted, a water system replacement, and a housing rehab. Um, they're both C D V G modification requests. We have a duty for three? That's what they said. They called this morning. What is they doing? Well, Paul's looking over that. There's a ribbon cutting this Tuesday, October third, a relocation for the Children's Advocacy Center of both Susquehanna and Wyoming County. It'll be on fifty five to eight three, I'm sure. Um, that's from nine A M to seven A M. It came in on the email.
Hey, Paul, none of that sounded like it was dominious in nature and some of its contract. I know, I'm just asking.
I, I don't, I'm just reading.
Okay. Yeah, and I need a reasonable amount of time to see it too also, please.
Sure. So, well, I'll wait. We need to make sure it's right here. This other adoption agreement, can I make a motion on that?
Is it a contract?
It's not a contract, it's act. So what we did was approve, uh, uh.
It feels like it's like, I, I, I don't know, I, I feel like you should, this feels very private, like it should be executive session, but if it's public money being spent, I don't know.
It's a good idea.
I don't know.
You can't make a decision in public.
No, you still have to make one.
So we can discuss it executive session, we could have to make some changes.
So, let me just say something. Sure, sure, let me just say something about this. We approved this adoption at previous meetings. What happened is they needed access to the child's files.
Who's, who's they, I'm sorry?
They are children and youth.
Oh, okay, got it.
So our, so our administrator for children and youth needed to go back in and access files that contain registered health information for the adopted family. But they're asking us for that, that, be okay to do that. So they've asked us to sign a form allowing them to get extra health information. It's already been an approved adoption, but, um, I guess before they can do that, it has to be approved by the. Um, so they're just asking for, uh, approval for that.
Does that, does the children and youth have to be part of the checkoff to make this final adoption?
Correct.
If you said no to them, would the adoption happen?
No.
Okay.
It's the only modification being made to the original agreement. So it's two resolutions both on the table. And all the other terms of the original agreement shall remain in effect. So we've already agreed for the adoption, we just needed a, yeah. All right, un, unprotected. Yeah, sure.
As being a mother of adopted children, most information, I tend to want to be the same thing, is extremely important. So the longer we hold up the adoption, the adopted family with a medical issue or anything pertaining to medical. In my heart, as an adopted mom.
You know what my question is? I hear, Lori, don't you hear that children and youth want to see it, or does the parents of the adopting parents want to see it?
Children and youth have to ask us for it, but it's for the adoption.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, so I mean, this is almost a no brainer, minus the fact you gotta follow whatever rules you have to follow. Yeah, now I, I hear it differently, thank you, Lori.
Network medical comes out. Because as you know, I want to child.
I know you do. And, and I, we don't, we're not seeing anything, we're just allowing them, parents to, to.
Well, that's, it's a no br, no brainer, yeah. Thanks, that's much better, thank you.
A motion to do that? Oh, okay, add it to the agenda, I am so sorry. So I'll make a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, and now, we don't have to do that, Ernie has to do it. All right, so now, so this is the only thing we're adding. Right, so now I'd like to make a motion to approve C N Y.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Boom. Yeah, that is all I have, everybody. I, your public comment on non-action item?
I have a few.
All right, sure.
the twenty first meeting, I did check with the calendar when I, before I left my office.
Right.
And I'm ten minutes away.
Right.
Pulled in the parking lot, checked my calendar, walked in with Ernie, went back to my car once he said it was canceled.
Right.
And then it just like disappeared from the website.
So.
There's gotta be a better system.
Right, so, and that, and George brought that up, I think that, I think that we can resolve this today. We're supposed, we advertise a meeting on Thursday, we had nothing on Thursday. But we didn't realize that earlier. I mean, we didn't realize it was already on the website.
I think it's an I T problem more than that.
Yeah.
It's just dots not being connected electronically. You look at it one minute, it's there, and the next minute it's not there.
I mean, I take time off, I take
Right, and I.
An hour and a half off of work.
We all respect that. I mean, I'm sorry that, that happened. But I will get ahold of our, our computer people this morning.
So when, when do you guys typically cancel? The day before, if there's nothing for the agenda, you cancel the meeting?
Right.
And when you make that determination not to do an agenda, you should just administratively cancel the meeting.
Right.
Authorize.
This was, this was a weird one, sometimes things come up, we, we didn't have a thing to do.
Guys, guys, let me, let me drop to a second here.
Yeah.
The way that the, way that the law regulations tie into it, um, twenty four hours before we are putting it down. We don't have an agenda for the third, if you don't post it. But we have the opportunity to add things to the agenda, we can vote and add right up until ten o'clock in the meeting. And then if something comes up, and I apologize if people are doing that, but if something comes up between twenty four hours before and the ten o'clock meeting, we need to have the right, the opportunity to have that here. Just like, just like things came up from this point on.
Right.
And we have, have the opportunity. We also, because of the way that the laws were, we have to have our meetings advertised. And we, we have advertised over the, we, we, okay, sometimes there's no need for it. And I, I do apologize.
Right. Even today, there's nothing going on this morning.
Twenty one, and again.
Thank you, Rick.
Rick, would you know, like, thirty? We have something, but then what if something comes up between the time?
Right.
But this is, this.
You're cutting off a little bit. What about thirty minutes in advance of the meeting, would you know that?
Oh, yeah.
Did you know it like thirty minutes in advance? We, we came in the day before for information.
Hang on, he's talking above you. He's frozen up top, he's being channeled.
But that's, that's the reason that we do it that way, because we have to, we have to advertise, we have to, then we do it.
I under, I understand what Rick is saying, but the meeting prior to that, I also came because it was listed. I was the only one here besides the other people from another committee meeting that was gonna be afterwards. The commissioners' meeting was open. I had a concern. And it was immediately closed. No pledge, no nothing. Commissioners meeting open, uh, commissioners' meeting adjourned. The other meeting started and I asked, is this public or not? Was asked, oh, no, I left. So that's two meetings in a row that there's been a mix-up. And I think it's very important for some of us that take time off work to come to the meetings. There's gotta be a better plan.
I'd like to speak on that item too. I think what's happened is people, we advertise everything a year in advance, it sounds like, am I right? That's making us be able to check the box and meet some kind of law standard, right? It doesn't bear well for the people, this is what's gonna keep happening. That gets done, and I kinda get it, I don't know if I would do it that way anymore. I would like the men of this commis, the three commissioners that are here now, and even Amber, and anybody who has authority on this matter is, we, we almost gotta try to get away from that because this is gonna keep happening year after year. When you guys leave and other commissioners come in here, they're gonna check that box, put everything up front in the beginning, and all this convoluted cancellations are gonna happen. Even the school board, which is a little bit more complex, they still have to do it monthly and put the agenda out there and that pertinent information. You guys aren't doing any of that right, right now. And it's gonna cost me arguing here, and I don't wanna argue, I just wanna state facts, but you guys, I really am leaning on you guys, long before I became a detractor to you guys somehow. I respect each one of you because of your business nature. You all, three of you, will not be here in ten years. So please set this place up. So the next round of commissioners and or solicitors, they start doing this a little bit better, because we wanna get more involved. We just saw what happened when the people don't get involved, you know? You guys, okay, thank you. But hey, listen, did, did you guys vote on the juvenile justice move? They did vote on it, okay.
So one of the reasons why we do that yearly, and I'm just, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong. But one of the reasons why they do that yearly is because it saves the taxpayers, who loses money on advertising. We advertise it once in the beginning of the year, these are our meeting dates, these are our vacation days, these are our, I mean, and it, it, a normal ad in, every single week would be hundreds of dollars. Um, so that's one of the reasons why we did it. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying that's one of the reasons years ago we thought it was a good idea. So I, so I, I know why Lori does that. Every year she makes up a schedule and every year we take it to the newspaper and they, they put everything out. Maybe we're doing it all wrong, and, but that's, that was our reasoning behind it, was to save money. And maybe it's just not working anymore.
Sure. Um, maybe take a specific week and day, have one public commissioners' meeting and maybe two work sessions, one before, one after, or two before. Make them work sessions, then we can sit and have a, a discussion in a room. And then you can fix up your agenda of how you want it at that one and only public quarter that we have, maybe the third Thursday of every month, or the third Tuesday of every month, whatever.
Which would work for that.
It's just an idea.
We still have things that come up, yeah.
It's just, it's just an idea of maybe take everybody's train of thought into a different direction, make it more high three.
No, I, I have another suggestion to, that's lesser than hers. Hers would take a lot of work, and if you're willing to do it, that's a good answer. But can you do it quarterly instead of once a year? Take a deep breath and say, what are we doing quarterly? Because it's, I think you guys can probably.
These are all good thoughts.
Yeah, maybe do advertising quarterly instead of once a year, do it quarterly for the quarter coming up.
Thank you, guys.
Now I have a couple other things.
Sure, before you continue with that, on the same subject. We came in twenty four hours before the meeting, picked up the agenda and were told then that there was no meeting. Okay, so I was out yesterday, and I don't mean to cut you off at all, I'm sorry. I was out and I was sick.
We talked about the twenty first meeting, right?
No.
We, yes.
Okay, sure. So I had it ready, so there was a miscommunication. Um, I had it ready on Friday because I knew I wouldn't be.
No, 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 I'm not talking about this meeting, I'm talking about.
Oh, the twenty first, yeah.
We came twenty four hours before, pick up paperwork.
We came 24 hours before, yeah, picked up paperwork, and Ernie at that point yelled at us that there was no meeting. I heard you guys out here, I was in here, um, but I, we didn't have it again, I mean, we, nothing came up. Okay, and so that could be handled differently. Now, to finish that... That used to be a work session. To finish that, when we came, we saw the 21st still on the website. When we got here, we looked, and it was not on there, and it was no longer on my phone. But she looked the next day, and it was there, right up to the point where she walked in the door, and there's a reason for that. Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna have to check that out, and, and, and maybe it can be answered right away. And the reason for that is, the website has an option, that your modus guy is gonna have to work on. Okay. All right, it's auto-refresh versus, uh, kind refresh, I don't know what it's called these days. Okay. But, uh, when we were doing it, you had an option where you could do it, and because the internet was slow, if you got a page, it would show you that same page for five days. I got you. Okay, whereas if there's a little option on that page, right at the very beginning, it says auto-refresh, so every time somebody goes to that page, they get a new page. Got it. And... I see what you're saying. Because I get emails like that too. Calendars, meetings, agendas, both should have the instant refresh, maybe it's called that, I don't know. I'll ask him, and maybe I'll have more information that I'm gonna give you here, so I'll ask him some questions. They wrote, yeah, notes here, um, what you said, because I don't have a clue, and I looked at it, it was modus, not modus. Oh, modus, M-O-O-D-U-S. Yeah, modus. Yeah, yeah. No, U-S. U-S, yeah.
Tom, Tom.
Yeah.
Don't, don't call him until I get that, I want to do...
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's this week anyway, we'll be good. All right.
Okay. What are my things?
Yep.
I'll be here Thursday.
Perfect.
Has the attorney from down towards Philly got the contracts? Our employees' contract signed, is everything settled? Is that a complete deal?
It is not, I'm waiting for the last day. I don't know what that is.
No, we have arbitration.
Thursday, okay, I didn't know when it was. Arbitration's Thursday, he'll make the decision that day?
No.
No, he'll listen to all the cases that day?
Probably six weeks or less.
Really?
But then we have another group that only... We have two more, only one people on arbitration.
I didn't know that.
Okay, my next question...
Did that answer that? Because I didn't know either, so that's good, okay.
Yeah, no, no, I understood what you're saying.
All right. Thank you.
My other concern is, we've had two ceilings come down.
Mm-hmm.
Um, have the other ceilings been inspected for safety reasons for every employee that works in this building?
Absolutely, and there were two different reasons why that happened.
I understand that.
Yeah, um, one was a, uh, was a terribly old ceiling in the old part of our courthouse, and so, yes.
Okay.
Short answer, yes.
Okay.
Um, and I should have a signed statement here soon. The company that did that went through and tested for everything.
Okay. All right, um, probation.
Rainbow, it's her name.
My next concern is probation. Um, Williams hired a new juvenile probation officer.
Correct.
So how many does that give us on staff?
Okay, so we're still down a couple probation officers. That, that replaces one, but I, I feel much better if it's just...
I mean, you can tell me in the next meeting, between the juvenile...
Because he does all the time.
Like, exactly, how many probation officers are short, how many do we have?
We're down to, I think, two, don't hold me on this, but I think we're down to two in juvenile right now, because we just don't need, yeah, they need to do their own.
Right. The reason, the reason that they used to have a lot more was because of TM. Right, after they left, the man was...
But let's let the judge explain this, yeah.
All right, no problem. Um, my other question is very near and dear to my heart, um, as my dad, most of you know, was a veteran. Um, reason why I came September 1st was a concern in the meeting, prior to that, with a concern where the meeting was open and closed in a matter of minutes, was us folks over in Evans Falls at the roadside rest met two of the most, the nicest gentlemen that were up in their 80s. Their car had broke down.
That is...
Now, my question, I mean, they were fed by good Samaritans.
We had...
Their car, the car was towed, um, and fixed for the gentleman.
I don't wanna say a whole lot here, but I don't wanna...
I don't want you to, I, I wanna finish.
All right.
I would like to know, where was the gentleman that runs Veterans Affairs for Wyoming County that should've been on top of this?
So I visited him on Thursday, those two gentlemen, and I've seen him lots of times over there.
I...
And on Thursday, when Don had their car towed, and I, I gave them all the, donated all the parts for it.
I understand.
Out of my own pocket, and, and they, um, I didn't wanna tell anybody that, but I just wanted you to know that was here.
I, I understand all of that part, but where did Veterans Affairs...
So I went over on Thursday, and that night, one of the ministers or somebody gave those guys some money. And I came back, both Ernie and I discussed this, and we're sending Jack over Friday morning, um, because I saw them late Thursday night, it was too late for me to call Jack, and Friday morning, they were gone. One had it delivered back to his home.
Right.
And the other guy took off. So they were both gone, and Jack was going over that morning. Since that day, I haven't seen them.
But it took a whole week for...
Well, I wasn't aware of everything.
Nobody told me that they stayed in there.
Yo, don't, don't raise your voice up. Me, I'm just concerned about our veterans.
Yeah, and so, so both of us don't read Facebook all the time. I, I try to, and I try to post stories, because I...
Well, you know, I live there, so I, I often...
So we weren't sure until Thursday night, and we did go over right away.
Right.
Um, and not that it's our job to do that, but you know me.
I know.
You know Ernie.
It's just a concern that we really need to get on top of...
There's still a huge bill up there for...
We have some vets that are in need.
Um, the problem was, I went there every, I'd go there almost every day.
I know you are, I see you.
And those guys came over and talked to us.
And you have the dog.
And they were there.
I've seen you there.
And, and I waved to them, and, you know, they were very pleasant.
No, no, just knew they were here.
I didn't know, but they stayed with me.
Right, right. And I'd seen them there for months.
If nobody told me that, I would've had Jack down there the next morning.
They were there for almost a week.
Yeah, say, well, I didn't know that.
We didn't.
I thought they were leaving and coming back, you know, just coming to visit during the day, I didn't know.
So who do we contact when we, as a community?
Well, the minute, the day we...
Who do we contact as soon as we know that there's a homeless veteran, a veteran's car that broke down, a veteran that needs food? Exactly, who do we contact and who is in charge of that? Because is Veterans Affairs actually doing what they need to do for the citizens of this community?
So Veterans Affairs is just a part-time job, they're not here all week, um, so I'm not sure that's the right person to call. Um, Jack, we can call Jack in anytime we want, and he would, he would come and do things for us.
I understand.
So the minute we knew that that was the case, we both decided to call Jack and send him over there, um, but it was Thursday night.
So we should just call the commissioners' office, and you guys will get the right person?
I'm, I'm not sure, if, if we're not here, maybe, maybe the police should be involved, or somebody that is a homeless person over there, or the DA's office, or somebody that answers 24 hours. We don't...
Well, we need to get the police involved, they're not causing no buckets, they're like...
Right, right, right. But it's...
He's saying it's the best.
Okay.
It's the best.
It's their best.
Contact one of us.
Okay.
Because Jack's only here one day a week.
Right.
In the office.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Yeah. We really do, we really were heartbroken over that, and we had no clue they were shooting.
Yeah. Nobody, nobody told me that.
But we both talked to them, I mean, we talked to them over there, they've been there most of the summer.
I spoke to them also, and...
Yeah, no, I see, he had to be a Bible...
I assumed they were working with Veterans Affairs to get help, because they said people had been stopping by to help them.
And the last we knew, they had a home.
But that wasn't the case.
I mean, the guy had a, a home, one of the guys had a...
For all I know, there were two people that were down there in the afternoon, just sitting there.
Wonderful gentleman to talk, loves talking.
And every time I went in there, I never stopped calling them, but I waved to them, I waved back.
Their cars were fixed and everything, they're not even...
Two wonderful veterans, and I love listening to their stories.
Yeah, if I'd had any idea they were spending the night there, we would've had somebody down there.
They were there for days.
Yeah, well, we didn't, I didn't know that.
No, we did, we honestly did.
I thought there was one down there.
You know, I said, you're all kinds of good, but you look at homeless people.
I know, I know.
That's for sure.
Thank you.
I, I have, I have some things too, I, I let her go past her three, her three minutes, so I, so I don't, so I don't wanna get caught up in my three minutes being jammed on me. So Reading versus Eagle, you familiar with that case law by any chance? Reading versus Eagle? I think if you read it, it'd be helpful, because it's like a case law, right? That's gonna help guide us a little bit, so we're not arguing, but simply why we need stuff 24 hours in advance? And I'm working with legislature to try to get it to be 48 or 72, because it's not fair even getting some of the stuff 24 hours in advance, you don't have enough time to deal with it. But since the sunshine law says we get to read this, give us a reasonable amount of time, if you don't give it to us 24 hours in advance, I'd hate to have to sit here at the table and read this stuff, but that is by rule what we get. And my point is for me and for all the people, people wanna get involved, and people wanna get involved, they can help, there's, there's matters that you guys aren't gonna know to, to a detail, and an outsider coming in might be able to help, so we need this 24 hours in advance, the law says it, and it's the pertinent information too, and we shouldn't have the right to know it, you know? So why we need it is, today, because the, let's, let's just, um, Mrs. Franco, she, she had a report. Now, the report doesn't tell me what she's gonna speak on, now I get to speak in front of her report, right? On any, on an actionable item. Well, since I don't know what's in it, when she says an item, like she did, now I have to interrupt you guys to talk about something I'm just finding out. Um, another good example is, uh, the Commissioners' Activity Report. There was 20, 21 items at least in there, and I could've, I could've stopped him at every single one of those to talk about each one of those, because in fact, I would not have known what was in that report till it came out of his mouth, therefore, it was either discussed, deliberated, commented on, or gonna be voted on, it's gonna be one of those. So why you wanna give us the stuff 24 hours in advance is, we get to prepare our speak prior to coming in here, and we, we don't have to interrupt, because I had the right to interrupt over 21 times, I'm not alone. And there's some really important ones, on those two tabled items, right? Those two tabled items, what were, what, what's the item names on those that you got, got tabled?
Resolutions.
Resolutions for what, I'm sorry? What are they gonna be, it's something I want...
CDVG grants.
Say it again, I'm sorry?
Um, C, B...
CD?
G grants.
Both of them?
Yep.[1509.52]